I'd like to now call back to order the regular meeting of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education for October 25th, 2016. May I have a roll call vote, or may I have a roll call, please, Eileen?
Mr. Barkowski?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Fulker?
Here.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Here.
Mr. Novitz?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First, I want to wish a warm welcome to everyone in the audience. A year ago, the board set a number of goals and for itself, and one of those was increased community engagement. And as part of that goal, we said we were going to take our board meetings on the road and visit each of our buildings. We did a couple of them last year, and we're doing Cherokee today. So, welcome Cherokee and everyone else in the audience. This month is National Principals Month in the state of Illinois, and while we don't need a state designation to remind us of how fortunate we are to have such incredible individuals at the helm of each of our schools, we will use that designation as a good reason to formally recognize and thank our principals for their awesome work. Being an effective principal is no small task. Our principals set the academic tone for their school and work collaboratively with and they work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards. They set and execute performance goals and objectives for our schools to achieve educational excellence. Our principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of this organization's most valuable resource, which is our youth. So tonight, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to give a big thank you to Renee DeVore, Tom Cardamone, Michelle Shin, Angela Sopko, and Jeff McHugh for all they do for our district, and most importantly, for all they do for our children. So, thank you to our principals. My only other comment is related to our history classes. I personally am a big White Sox fan, but I understand that there's probably some of my friends in this room that are Cubs fans, and I understand there's a World Series game with the first pitch in approximately two minutes. So, for those giving reports tonight, you may want to be concise. All right, thank you. With that, we move on to the superintendent's report.
Four score and seven years ago, spoken like a true Tigers fan.
2005, White Sox won the World Series.
Thank you very much. Rub it in, rub it in. So, I wanted to start out on a less exciting note than Mr. Barkowski ended on there, which is update, a brief update on the situation here in Cherokee. We have, as we have notified our parents and staff already, we have found small areas of mold in the building, and a cup, there's a small number of those. We've tested the air, they've come back, they've cleaned, they've taken actions already, and it is a sometimes long and tedious process to make sure that it is all done because they have to wait until the weather conditions are correct, and then when students are not in the building, so you need to do that over a weekend. So, weather permitting, we'll have an additional follow-up soon, and we'll also have a final report on that. So, I'd like to thank Mr. McHugh and also our maintenance folks for their hard work on addressing that. We called in Kaplan Environmental Services, an expert on air quality issues, and they're the ones leading that project for us. We also have upcoming conferences on October 27th and 28th. Encourage all parents to come to, to speak with their teachers, and it's one of the best events of the year. We also have a showing of Screenagers that is, where is my note on that? There it is. That is, tomorrow night? Takes a deeply personal approach, as it probes into the vulnerable corners of family life to explore struggles over social media, video games, academics, and internet addiction. Through poignant and unexpectedly funny stories along with surprising insights from authors, psychologists, and brain science scientists, Screenagers reveals how tech time impacts kids' development and offers solutions on how adults can empower kids to navigate their digital world and find balance. This is on November 9th at 7:00 PM at the Gorton Center. We're also going to have a panel of speakers there, including our own Judy Epke and our school resource officers, among others. It's a partnership with LEED, really appreciate all the work that LEED does with, with our district and with our kids. And this is a topic that if you have a student with a cellphone, this is something with which you are intimately familiar, the struggle of maintaining students' balance and also family balance. We're also going to have, this is well in advance, Most Likely to Succeed, a book by Tony Wagner. It'll be shown on January 18th. It's another partnership that we have, really appreciate all the work that LEED does with us on this and other events, and that completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Questions or comments for our superintendent? Seeing none, we come to our first public participation agenda item. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Hi, Paul Markoff, 1204 South Wilson Drive. Real briefly, I'm curious on the Narcan policy that the board decided not to adopt, or I guess it's called opioid antagonist, or whatever, what the considerations were with that when you get to that policy part of the meeting, whether it was cost, or just didn't see then any issues with it, or what the issue was with that, but as to why the board didn't adopt that, if there could be some discussion, I would appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you, Paul. Any other members of the public that'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to reports and discussions. The strategic plan, Mike.
This report in its entirety is in the public packet, so anyone that wishes to see this report and look at it in greater detail can do so at any time they wish. Go to the website and go to the school board, and under our school board meetings on October 25th, you'll see this report listed there. I want to point out just a couple of the highlights from this year's strategic plan, and two of those are on the first page. The first of those is that all of our students will be, that we will aim to have all students reach grade level benchmarks that meet or exceed their individual growth target range. So, each student is going to have a growth target that we hope to see them attain, and that we expect that for all of our students. This is a new undertaking for us this year. This is a new goal for this year, and one that we will measure year after year. And then we expect to annually increase the number of students that, that achieve that goal, and with the obvious intent of having all of our students meet that. The second one, and perhaps even the most challenging one of the bunch, for some time we've been talking as a district about social and emotional growth for students. This is frankly the part of our district mission vision and our milestones that is, in my estimation, the most challenging of all, and defining what social and emotional well-being is, is not easy. And then growing in that social and emotional well-being. So, we have two things underway for this year. The first of those is to define what we believe for our district, what social and emotional well-being and what our standards will be, and then create a reporting mechanism for that, for that well-being and for that growth. The final one is item 2C, and second milestone under instruction, and this is something that impacts in a positive way that every student in the district already this year has benefited from. Our teachers came in over the summer, spent a huge amount of time, about 75 of our teachers, K through 8, came in and spent four full days in a Lucy Cawkins Reader's Workshop. And so, our second 2C is, is to implement the Reader's Workshop model. And a workshop model, to be clear on what that is for anyone that has not seen that, is markedly different than the way that we went to school, which was kids sitting in rows and a teacher reading, or having individual students read. As opposed to that, a workshop is small groups, occasionally a large group, but very individualized and tailored to the students' interests and abilities. So, we are already underway with that one. So, and I don't want to go on and on about our strategic plan, it's all available, but I'm ready for questions if anybody has any on this year's plan.
Any questions or comments for our superintendent?
I just have one quick comment with regard to the Reader's Workshop. I was able to attend the parent workshop that was given on Reader's Workshop for Parents at Sheridan, and it was just phenomenal, and so informative, and so detailed. And if you didn't know what Reader's Workshop was like, you knew by the end of it. So, well done.
And I'd like to thank Susan Mills and her team for putting those together. That was something, I heard the same feedback last year with our writing workshop from Suzie Colby, one of our teachers at the middle school, and parents came away and said, one of the most impressive things they have ever seen an educator demonstrate for them. So, these demonstrations really are helpful to our parents. Thank you for that, Mrs. Sands.
Thank you, Mike. We now move to board committee reports. Our first board committee is Board of Education Committee chaired by Beth.
Thank you. The Education Committee met on October 5th, and the first item on the agenda was to talk about annual committee goals. Susan Mills and I got together before the, at the start of the year to kind of talk about what we wanted to accomplish on the committee this year. And we set three goals. First, more fully engaging all the members of the committee. And two, keeping our discussions at a more strategic level and making sure that they were highly linked to the mission vision, milestones work. And third, developing an annual calendar to make sure that all academic areas are being covered. We presented this work to the committee and particularly got feedback on the academic areas to be covered, and we'll be updating that. The next item on the agenda was Judy Epke providing an update on both the Haskins Project and the classroom transformations regarding Haskins. As the board knows, we're still waiting on some cost figures from the architects, and once we receive the breakout of that and better understand the various components of the project, we can better understand how it relates relative to other district priorities. Judy reminded us that the space is a full 11,443 square feet, i.e. very big, and so that's important to keep in mind when looking at the cost. She also provided us an update on learning spaces, showing us classroom photos from around the district, and in some cases, some of the furniture is very outdated or inadequate for the needs of the students. Some teachers have been very creative in updating their own space, whether that's from using furniture that they found, or things that they've purchased on their own. But this is an area that we're going to be focusing on this year. The next steps are to really develop a plan for how to attack this and do a survey of both teachers and students to better understand their needs, and take an inventory of exactly what furniture we do have and where it's located. So, she will be coming back to the Education Committee once a more formal plan and timeline is developed. Susan Mills took us through an update on inquiry, and there's been a lot of great work in this area. There've been multiple training sessions for teachers since last spring. In fact, almost 120 teachers have attended inquiry training sessions, including about a dozen from here at Cherokee who have sort of done the 200-level class, which is a more advanced inquiry, skill-building class. There are also three inquiry committees that have been formed. One, that's an overall K-8 inquiry task force. One, that is K-4 social studies, and one that's looking at DPM science. Susan also took us through an update on the reading and writing workshop, which as Mr. Simic just talked about, has been a major undertaking in our ELA program. Significant professional development was conducted, including a four-day homegrown reading institute that was attended by 73 teachers over the summer, and teachers were really able to kind of do a deep dive on the implementation and see how they could really flesh out their plans to execute this in their own classrooms this year. There was also an advanced writing training session that had 68 participants. Overall, the teacher feedback on both the reading and the writing, consistent with what Mrs. Sands just shared from the parent's perspective, has been very, very positive. It's believed that the reading implementation is going more smoothly because of the experience with writing in the prior year, and teachers are already reporting that they're seeing some strong performance from their students of this new curriculum. To support the implementation, a kit's been developed that houses all the key information, including, you know, links for our teachers, FAQs, pacing calendars, et cetera, and the goal is to really improve in structural alignment across the district on this implementation. Our next meeting will be December 7th in Seminar A at the West Campus. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Questions or comments for the Education Committee? Seeing none, we move on to the Board Finance and Operations Committee chaired by Rob Lemke.
Thanks, Ben. So, the Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, October 11th at 8:00 AM. In attendance were board members Tom and Kent and myself, community members Richard, John, Paul Darling, and Tara Janos, and representing the administration were Jen, Brittany, and Carol. We basically discussed two issues, the tax levy and the five-year plan. So, Jen reviewed the tax levy process and used some examples to show the tax burden placed on residents due to the District 67 tax levy. In particular, about 25% of a residence property tax bill goes to District 67, and we then reviewed the district's options regarding the tax levy and our debt service. Next, Jen reviewed the administration's five-year plan, including the key assumptions regarding inflation, enrollment, new construction, and state revenue. She then showed the committee the projected reserves under, basically two scenarios, one under status quo, and two, a plan that included adding several teaching positions over the next two years, as well as undertaking over $2 million of additional or new capital improvements over the next five years. And under that second plan, projected reserves dip below 10% in year three, but return to being in the 10% to 15% range by year five, which is in line with board policy. We might be hearing more about those projects later on. The committee asked Jen and the administration to provide some sensitivity analysis regarding the projected reserves vis-à-vis the key assumptions to the model. Specifically, we asked to see the projected numbers in a scenario of very low inflation, less new construction than we have typically seen, and less state revenue than we have received recently. The meeting ended at 9:20 with all committee members expressing that the meeting was extremely useful in terms of learning about both the tax levy and the five-year budget. And though she is not here tonight, I would like to thank Jen again, and Brittany, for providing the committee with two terrific reviews on these topics. The Finance and Operations Committee will next meet at West Campus on Tuesday, January 17th to primarily discuss the audit.
Thanks, Rob. Questions or comments for?
Just a quick comment. Jen's comment as far as discussing and explaining the tax levy was great. It brought everyone to an equal level of understanding and was truly appreciated as a starting point. And I think special mention has to be made that I don't think Jen's a huge Cubs fan, but she's out today because of a problem with her leg, so, just appreciate it.
Question for you. You said the next finance committee is in January, depending on the information?
The next scheduled, the next scheduled meeting.
Any other questions or comments for Finance and Ops? Thank you. Seeing none, we move on to Policy Committee chaired by Jeff Fulker.
The Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is November 15th at 8:00 AM at the West Campus.
Thank you, Jeff. The Compensation Committee is next, headed by Tom Ford.
Compensation Committee has not met since our last meeting, but we are scheduled to meet on Monday, November 14th at the West Campus at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Tom. Next is Joint Shared Services Committee, which has not met since our last meeting, followed by the Board Operating Procedures Committee headed by Jeff Fulker.
The Board Operating Procedures Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we do have a meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM at the West Campus.
Thank you. We now move to liaison reports. First liaison report, North Shore Special Ed District, Suzanne Sands.
The NSSCD Leadership Council met on October 5th, and the meeting actually started with a field trip. You may remember, last year I spoke about them moving the transitions program to a new facility. It's just south of Lake Cook Road, and so we went to the facility. They gave us a tour, and they spent some time talking to us about the fact that they, as an organization, are thinking about what they're doing for kids with the end in mind. It's one of the themes of how they're approaching things this year, and so we were educated as a, as a group on what some of the challenges are that families face when their children hit that age 22 and they're out of the system. And they're on their own, and basically the families then have no safety net left, which is what NSSCD has been providing. So, they've been going out to different groups that serve those families and students and adults, once they leave NSSCD, to find out what can they be doing differently and better, to better support their families and prepare them for that transition. And so, they're starting to work on making shifts and changes and adjustments to how they do things to, to better do that. The facility looks great. What they're doing there is amazing work, and, and is designed so that hopefully people don't actually spend much time in the actual facility. They're out working in their communities, doing things and whatnot. Dr. Schneider updated us on transition work and on some of the professional development that some of his staff is doing. We also had a moment where Jim Fitten, who is the business manager, gave us an overview of NSSCD revenue sources as requested by someone on the Leadership Council, and so you can look in the report for where the revenues come from for NSSCD, very similar to us. 88% of the revenues are local, and the rest are state and federal, which was a little bit surprising to me. I actually expected them to be getting more from state and federal, so that information is in the report if you're interested in that. NSSCD has decided to go into conversations with NSRAS and negotiations. They have an intergovernmental agreement for providing a summer program that they are renegotiating this year. In terms of emergency planning, Susan Hans provided an update on their emergency planning and the professional development that they do for emergency operations plans, and they are actually looking at the Crisis Go app. So, I had shared that with our staff to say, you guys may want to talk to them because we already are using it. The Advisory Committee, I was asked to come to the NSSCD Advisory Committee, which met yesterday. One of the things that is being discussed is facility issues. I've come to you a number of times and reported about space issues. The Leadership Council sort of charged their, their administration with, listen, you need to look at the whole picture in order for us to make decisions about this kind of thing, and we had a great meeting, and that will probably come in the report from my next Leadership Council meeting. There were some votes on rental agreements and things like that that happened, but all of that was in the report that I submitted, and you're welcome to read it, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has them.
Questions or comments for Suzanne on NSSCD? Thank you, Suzanne. Next up is Legislative Liaison. Beth?
Ed Redd had their kickoff to the school season with a fall luncheon on October 7th. Mr. Simic, Mrs. Sands, and myself were in attendance, as well as Mrs. Davis from District 115. The speakers for the month were Dr. Beth Purvis, Secretary of Education for Governor Rauner, as well as three state legislators representing both parties, and folks who were actively involved with education reform within the state. Dr. Purvis opened the discussion, talking about her role and priorities as the Education Secretary. She is the key strategy and policy advisor to the governor. One fact I found pretty interesting is she shared that there are 16 different state agencies that oversee education from pre-kindergarten through post-secondary education, and so Dr. Purvis does act as sort of a liaison to all these different agencies, and hopefully a conduit between them. Additionally, she chairs the governor's Illinois School Funding Reform Committee, a task force that looks at more, is looking at a more equitable funding formula. Their goal is to make a recommendation to the governor by February, so a lot of work on that front. She did stress, however, that revised funding options should not have winners and losers pitting communities against each other. She also works with the P-20 Council, a public-private partnership group, looking to identify ways for the public sector to help improve education. Each of the legislatures, legislators also spoke mostly about their work on the Every Student Succeed Act. Obviously, we've talked about the ESSA before. They believe this is the most sweeping piece of legislation impacting education in quite some time, and the state is working very hard to put together its implementation plan. They're looking to have that in place by March, or at least May at the latest. In addition to ESSA, they said their key focus areas for this year would be evidence-based funding, shifting pension costs to the local school districts, freezing property taxes, and of course, funding reforms. So, it's likely to be an active year on the education legislation front, and we will continue to stay involved as issues come up and potentially impact our district. That concludes the legislative report.
Thank you, Beth. Questions or comments for Beth? We move to Spirit of 67 Foundation, Suzanne.
The Spirit of 67 Foundation Board has not met since our last meeting, as they're only meeting four times this year. Their next meeting will be November 8th at 9:00 AM. However, there are two things that have happened recently that I will just share briefly. The barn dance and online auction were successful events and raised over $40,000, which will be used to fund grants in the district. And Electrify Your Strings is a grant this year. World-renowned electric violinist Mark Wood is coming to perform a free concert with DPM and LFHS orchestra students on Wednesday, November 2nd at 7:00 PM in the LFHS Raymond Moore Auditorium. We are really excited about the opportunity. The previous year, we purchased instruments for the orchestra, and now they're getting some time with him to do rehearsal and then perform.
Thank you, Suzanne. Questions or comments regarding the spirit? Seeing none, we move to the APT, Jeff Fulker.
The District 67 APT Executive Board held its October meeting on Wednesday, October 12th in the boardroom at the West Campus. The highlights included at the various school buildings, all of the, I shouldn't say all, at Sheridan and Everett. They hosted their Halloween parties this past Friday. Sheridan had its Monster Bash, and Everett had its Halloween party. Cherokee has its Spook Fest scheduled for this Friday. The Community Service Committee reported that the annual Thanksgiving food drive will begin next week. Food collection will begin on October 31st and will run through November 14th, with collection boxes being available in the lobby of each school. The specific items to be collected will be communicated separately in the near future. There will also be a food sortation opportunity on November 17th through the 19th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Gorton Center. Volunteers are welcome to that, but space is limited. And then lastly, the food that will be donated is going to be loaded onto trucks for delivery on November 20th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, and again, volunteers are welcome. All details around the Thanksgiving food drive will be communicated via Friday, Friday Flyers, school district, and APT website, sandwich boards, and email blasts. In terms of membership, out of the 1,070 families in District 67, 920 have joined the APT so far this year, which puts the APT's participation rate at 86%. There are still a total of 909 duplicate payments that came as a result of the online registration process that will be refunded to members. From the Fine Arts Committee, two exciting programs this past month. The Great Presidential Challenge was presented in all the school buildings. It was a game, game show-style presentation, which engaged students in learning more about presidential history and how the process works, or at least how it's supposed to work. And it was well-received. works, or at least how it's supposed to work. And it was well-received by all the students and as well as the teachers. Also this month, there's an exciting new program called Barrel of Monkeys that's being implemented with all the 4th grade classrooms across the district. Barrel of Monkeys is a writing curriculum that focuses on facilitating creative expression and is based on research that shows that drama games work to improve the quality and consistency of writing and literary skills, and that stimuli provided through pictures, song, movement, and play-acting are essential to child development. In that regard, earlier this month, the Barrel of Monkeys teacher artists met with all of the 4th grade classes for one hour to discuss the writing assignment, how they would like to do their performance and writing strategies. They focused on group writing versus individual writing, writing for performance, and social and emotional confidence. Following this session, the students will then continue to work on their pieces with the teachers, and then will send them to Barrel of Monkeys once they are completed. And this is where it gets kind of exciting. In December, the Barrel of Monkeys crew will return to perform the student pieces that were written to the entire 4th grade class across all buildings. The kids will all meet, I think, at DPM or at one of the buildings to watch the Barrel of Monkeys folks come back with acting out their actual writing pieces, which I think is really a neat way to bring to life what the kids are trying to do with their writing. So, it's a really exciting program. The kids will really get to see how their performance writing looks on the stage. In terms of school supplies, some great news. School PAC celebrated their 25th anniversary this past year and decided to use this as an opportunity to give back to those schools that have been customers for a significant portion of that time. District 67 has been using School PAC since 2003. They offered a 25th anniversary commission to those select schools based on each school's sales. I'm happy to report that District 67 will receive over $2,600 as a result of our record School PAC orders this year. School PAC will send this money directly to the APT, who will then distribute it to each building in relation with their actual sales. So, nice, we're getting, the APT will be getting money back from School PAC this year, that can be used within each of the buildings. So, very exciting. Lastly, the Visiting Author Committee mentioned that Children's Author Candace Fleming will be visiting the elementary buildings in early November. So far, 267 books were purchased by students and will be personalized and delivered the day of the author's visit. The next APT Executive Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 9th at the West Campus. Thank you very much.
Questions or comments for Jeff? Seeing none. The agenda says our next Liaison Report is "Other," and my cheat sheet says that Suzanne may have a few comments for EDRED. Is that true? Okay, so we'll skip that. Very good. It's what cheating gets you. Okay, we move to our second public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the Board? Seeing none, move on with that as well. We're going to move on to the action items now. We've got a healthy list. Prior to our Board meeting tonight, the Board met in workshop and rolled up our sleeves and worked through a number of projects that the administration is talking about, and the Board charged the admin to continue to gather more information on a lot of these projects, including financial detail, sensitivity analysis, financing options. So, for a number of these items, which I will read in a moment, that we're not really actually ready to take a vote to approve these items, so I am going to ask for a motion to table items 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, which I will read right now. But if the Board agrees, I'm going to take, I'm going to look for a motion to table all of them en masse. So, item number one is approval of Perkins &amp; Will proposal for Deerpath-West Haskins Center. Number four, approval of Perkins &amp; Will proposal for Deerpath-West Vestibules. Number five, approval of Perkins &amp; Will proposal for Sheridan Playground. Number six, approval of Perkins &amp; Will proposal for Cherokee Playground. Number seven, approval of Development of District-wide Furniture Classroom Transformation Plan. And number eight, approval of Development of District 67 Master Facility Plan. Is there a motion to table all of those items?
Yes, sir is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding the tabling of aforementioned items?
Should it be clarified that the tabling of these items in no way suggests that the Board will not be addressing these in the future?
Exactly. The reason for tabling them is, as I just said, the Board has asked the admin to continue to gather a lot of information, including financial, as well as educational, on all of them. We're just simply, we don't have enough information to make a well-informed decision right now. Other questions, comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please, on the tabling of items 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Clemmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to action item number two, which is the approval of Perkins &amp; Will proposal for schematic drawings for Cherokee, Sheridan, and Everett Vestibules in the amount not to exceed $99,250. Is there a motion to approve that? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion on that?
So, just to clarify, because we got cut a little short in our discussion, by approving this, does this mean we will not have an option of securing additional bids?
We have been in contact with Jen Hermes since we left our workshop, and one of the clarifications that she provided is if you award a bid that is in excess of $25,000, you have to go through an RFP process for that, which is very long. And these projects would be in excess of $25,000. So, approving this would preclude, would preclude going out to bid unless we want to delay them to a different year in all likelihood, because we'd have to go through an RFP process. So, one of the things we discussed earlier is our ability to go out and solicit a variety of different architects that might bid on that. Because the fees would exceed $25,000, we have to go through a fundamentally different process and a longer one.
So, then different than what we talked about, a different process than simply...
Than simply soliciting bids and then taking the one we wanted, because they would not be the architect of record. Do I have that wrong, Brittany? Thought I had that right?
In essence, it wouldn't be different than what we talked about. We put out an RFP. We had formally put it out versus saying, "A, B, C, can you give us a price?" So, it would take a little bit longer, like we've discussed, because it'd be more than $25,000. If we knew they were under $25,000, and we knew the architect's fee would be under, we could hit up a few architects that we would want to see and ask. They wouldn't have to do a formal process. So, it's still similar to what we discussed. It's just you have to watch that, and we would know this would be over $25,000. So, it could probably take us anywhere, I think, between two to five months, probably, depending on the extent of the RFP. And then if we do approve this tonight, then we would be foregoing, looking at other architects for this.
So, by approving it, then we have to go through with this vendor and take it...
Correct. We're engaging with Perkins &amp; Will for them to do the schematic designs on the vestibules.
And one other clarity, it is more than $25,000, and policy states that for anything more than $25,000, you have to put it out to bid, with the exception of professional services that require a certain level of knowledge or skill, and architects fall under that rule. So, we have the ability to select architects without having to put it out for a broad bid, because that falls under the, the school code allows you to select them without putting it out for bid, if they bring a level of specialized services.
Is it that it allows them to select or to use the architect of record without putting it out to...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Correct. And Perkins &amp; Will is our architect of record, which is why we can do it with them without doing this process.
Correct.
We selected them as the architect of record.
If we wanted to go with someone else, then we would do the RFP, because it's over $25.
Okay, so if we wanted to go to any other architect besides the architect of record, it would take a formal RFP process to do?
Correct, because we anticipate it would be more than $25.
We can't do that in an informal way?
Correct.
Okay.
Good clarification. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Novit?
No.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmerson?
Nay.
We, the motion carries.
Thank you. We move to action item number three, which states approval of Perkins &amp; Will proposal for schematic drawings for Deerpath East Office Renovations Nurses Spaces, Nurses Space, and Vestibules in the amount up to $82,200. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments and discussion on this item? See, again?
I was just asking if it's helpful to clarify some of the questions people have relative to approving this particular measure, and why there's questions relative to beginning the process that we discussed at workshop that others may not have...
Fantastic, good. For, so we had a workshop session prior to this, again, where we rolled up our sleeves and sort of dove deep into these projects. One of the things, so you can see on the agenda, the extent of the projects that we're talking about right now, which are listed there, and the last one talks about a, what we're calling a Future Spaces Plan, which will look at all of our buildings, sort of under the milestone of environment that's in our mission and vision. The two items that we're voting on here, the one we just voted on and the one we're about to vote on, are for the schematic drawings for these two vestibule areas. One of the things that we talked about in our workshop is, we're not actually approving the projects right now. We're approving the schematic drawings for the projects. And our business folks at this meeting, as well as a prior meeting we've had, listed out what the process for these projects look like. And there are eight or nine different steps in that process. At each one of those steps, the Board would be giving some sort of approval. So, what we're voting on here and what we just voted on, we are not saying we are approving to do these vestibules right now. We're approving to spend money in order to take the next step, to gather more information, which in the process that's been laid out is to do the schematic drawings, the architect does. That's going to bring us refined information on the cost associated with the project, as well as what the project really is, how it really works with our buildings, et cetera. So, this is taking the next step to gather information, and if this project were to move forward and be done, you would see this on the agenda. You'd see us discussing and voting in some future months. Does that help?
Yeah, but that being said, I think there's some questions that came up with Board members relative to the use of Perkins &amp; Will as our architect without there being any additional bidding for that service. And I think it's a very valid concern, based on what we just heard, though, from Brittany. Deciding to go that direction, which I think long-term is a good thing to do, would significantly set back the timing of being able to complete these projects. But I think that's just, people understand why there's question as to why we wouldn't move forward. There's an opportunity to understand that we're spending the taxpayers' dollars as effectively and efficiently as possible, and balancing that against the timing of getting the project done.
That's exactly right. We talked at some length about, do we want to be looking at Perkins &amp; Will and perhaps other professional service providers, and bidding that business out to see if they still are the right fit for us. And as Jeff just said, in these cases, we looked at the potential cost benefit. We looked at the potential time impacts. And for these projects, we said we're going to move forward with the schematic, at least with voting on the schematic drawings. That does not preclude us from saying we want to take an overall look at the architect of record or other professional services.
To clarify on my last vote on item two, I'm not rejecting Perkins &amp; Will. They made me wonderful, but I just want to see, especially for spending money, what other opportunities and designs might exist. I think I owe it to the public to look at those.
I think that's a good clarification for people, for those that weren't part of the, so thanks, Jeff, for bringing that up, because I think it's always, you know, time versus being thorough, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. I agree. Other questions or comments before we vote on this? Eileen, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmerson?
Nay.
Mr. Novit?
Nay.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to action item number nine, approval of press issue 92, second reading. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?
Okay, I will just real quickly, kind of reiterate or go through exactly what was in press release 92, again, for the general public as well as for the Board. The policies in effect were recommended, changed policy updates. Were Policy 2.70, which deals with vacancies on the school board and how those vacancies are filled. Essentially, the wording was just adjusted to clarify timing in terms of how much time you actually have in order to fill vacancies. It did not in any way substantially or substantively change the policy. So, the Policy Committee agreed to adopt the changes. Policy 6.100 is a new policy to the district, dealing with using animals in the educational program. While there were understandings relative to how we dealt with kids' participation in animal dissection or experiments, as well as what animals were brought into the school, this policy formalizes kind of how that's going to work and what's allowed and so forth. It's not in any way, not in any way in deference to what we would currently do, just had a good common sense. So, the Policy Committee recommended adopting and accepting that new policy. The third policy was Policy 7.270, which deals with administering medicines to students. There was a suggested addition to the policy that deals with undesignated opioid antagonists, and how those, that the schools could be allowed to dispense those with authorized personnel. The Policy Committee, at the recommendation of school nurses and others in the administration, recommended that we not include that in the policy. And to Mr. Markoff's question from earlier, I'll ask Dr. Wymer in a second to come up and explain a little bit more as to why that occurred. Policy 8.90 dealt with parent organizations and booster clubs. We do have this policy. I may have misspoke at the last meeting. This policy is currently within our manual. The option that was included was to require all parent organizations and booster clubs to have 501(c)(3) status. We rejected that option and said, "No, at this stage of the game, we don't," I believe they all do, but we did not ask that as a requirement. And last, it's Policy 8.110, 110, dealt with public suggestions and concerns. Again, this was a new policy recommended of the district. However, we felt it was overly burdensome in the sense that if someone came to a Board meeting and presented a grievance to the Board and did not feel that that grievance was appropriately addressed, or there are issue, they could file an, I think it's a grievance process, an official grievance process, that we felt would take up undue amount of administration time, effort, and just, we feel confident we're going to address all the issues anyway, but nonetheless, we didn't feel this need to have that in a formal policy that held our feet to the fire. People started coming out of the woodwork and asking the administration to be more clear in terms of addressing their particular issues. So, those are the recommendations. Dr. Wymer, if you could provide a little bit more clarity and background as to why we decided to not include the undesigned opioid antagonist section of the policy, that would be much appreciated.
Sure, yes. I'm Ingrid Wymer, Executive Director of Student Services, and I participate in our district nursing meetings, and so, I'm happy to shed light on why that our nurses recommended that. The Narcon legislation is intended more for high schools than the younger grades, but that being said, we did discuss it at length amongst our nurses. And the nurses felt, for several reasons, that they were not comfortable with adopting that. Some of the reasons were, we feel fortunate that all of our emergency responders in Lake Forest, our police, our squad cars, and our paramedics have naloxone in them. And so, students, we feel like, Lake Forest is small geographically, and we have an excellent rapid response from paramedics when we needed to deploy them to schools. Also, also with the location of the Police Department being right next to Deerpath Middle School, and naloxone, the opioid antidote being available there, our nurses felt comfortable that the first responder... first responders would be able to administer that in time for, to reverse effects. Another thing that the nurses feel like they need more information on is schools are approved for the nasal spray version of Narcon. And they, our nurses really feel that the most effective, efficient, and the highest success rate is with IV administration of naloxone. So they are not certain how the administration of the nasal spray may interfere perhaps with the student being given the IV version. And they really feel that that's the best mode of administration. And then the other, the other part was, it's really, it's rather complex legally. And so we need to investigate more about secure storage, how to train administrators, and training people to administer it. So they felt like there were a lot of unanswered questions at this time. So hopefully that helps. And, you know, I'm happy to field more questions.
Thank you. You done?
Yeah, so that provides kind of an overview of what we had approved at the first reading, just to remind you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments for Jeff or otherwise on all these items? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Novitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move to approval of Policy 6:30, Organization of Instruction, second reading.
Is there a motion to approve the Policy 6:30, Organization of Instruction, second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments and discussion?
Once again, to remind the board and the general public, this particular policy deals with organization of instruction. And the section of the policy in consideration deals with kindergarten. The policy as it is currently written suggests that the district maintains a full-day kindergarten program, when in fact, we maintain a half-day kindergarten program, but also offer a tuition-based full-day program. So this merely changes the verbiage to be in alignment with what we are truly offering today.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to approval of Policy 2:60, Board Member Removal from Office, second reading. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Discussion?
At the end of the last board meeting, or at the end of the discussion of the first reading of this particular policy, there were questions asked around what is the process in which to remove a board member from office. Mrs. Fowler has spoken numerous times with the regional superintendent's office regarding a definitive process on how a local school board member would be removed, what criteria need to be met, or what is the process for informing the regional superintendent's office, and then what steps they would take. The answer that came back is there is no process. It has never happened. And as a result, they really don't know, other than they would seek legal, legal help in understanding what their rights are relative to removing an elected official from office. So the reality is, for this particular policy, in terms of the way it is written, it doesn't have a lot of teeth, admittedly. That being said, it at least outlines that, that the local board and that the regional superintendent does have the power, or at least has, within the school code, has the authority to remove a board member from office for what they describe as wanton neglect of their duties, which would be failing to, failing to show up for meetings on an ongoing and consistent basis, being a constant roadblock or barrier to progress from the school board perspective. But in the end, we recommended that we put this in, A, to recognize that there is such a process, even though it's not well-defined, and that to maintain a level of consistency with what District 67 has in their policy manual.
115.
115. What did I say, 67? Yeah, 115, sorry. Yes, so. Beyond that, I don't know if I have any specific recommendations.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you, Jeff. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Novitz?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the approval of 2016-17 Ad-Hoc Compensation Committee Charter. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? I'll comment on it. We created, I suppose I created an ad hoc compensation committee, I'm not sure if it was a year or two ago, to address a few compensation issues that the board had. We now have a few more that really the board, through its compensation chair, Tom, has defined. There's a number of items that we're not going to talk about tonight that we'd like to work on over the next year. And so with my blessing, Tom has put together a extension effectively to that charter for another year. Other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Novitz?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the approval of Human Resource Items Hiring, Leave, or Absent Reports. Is there a motion to approve the HR report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, your questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Novitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the Consent Agenda. Any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member. I will now read the Consent Agenda. Approval of Disbursements, Payrolls, and Financial Statements, September 2016. Minutes of a Regular Meeting and Workshop, September 27, 2016. Minutes of an Executive Session, September 27, 2016. Minutes of a Budget Hearing, September 27, 2016. Minutes of a Board Workshop, October 19, 2016. Disposal of Audio Recordings, February 10, 2015. Does any board member wish to have any item on the Consent Agenda removed? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Novitz?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move to FOIA requests. We've had four FOIA requests in the past month, including NBC Universal Commercial, One Chance Illinois Commercial, Dodge Data and Analytics Bidding Team Commercial, IEA NEA Union. Announcements, Thursday, October 27. We have parent-teacher conferences from 4 to 8 p.m. Friday, October 28. We have parent-teacher conferences all day, no student attendance. Friday, November 11 is a school improvement day, half-day of student attendance. And next, and Tuesday, November 15, is our next Board of Education meeting, 7 p.m., and we will return to the West Campus Boardroom for that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.